Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December nineteenth, nineteen sixteen, Denver, Colorado. City Council meeting, so we ask you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Parker, would you take the role, please?
Atchison.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Bird.
Here.
DeCambre.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sights.
Here.
Council, please turn your mics off. Next item up for consideration is the consideration for the minutes of the previous meeting. Mr. Baker, if you would, please.
Really, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that, will the City Council approve for the minutes of, of the December twelfth, twenty-sixth meeting, twenty sixteen meeting, as they are presented.
The Sights?
Second.
All those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes, if you would, please. Go ahead and vote. If you haven't figured it out, we're still trying to figure out the buttons and bells and whistles. This is our first time using it, was last Monday, and not everything went quite as smooth as we'd hoped it would, so we're trying to OJT ourselves a little bit tonight, so try to be patient. There will be some delays in some of the stuff, especially once we start the voting. Between the time we start voting and actually displayed, there's a mandatory seven-second delay in there, so just be patient with us and try to get through as quick as we can. Next item on the agenda is presentations, and this time I'd ask Councilor Sights, if she would, for the twenty sixteen Digital Cities Award presentation.
All right, so I have the privilege of being the very first person to give a presentation. David, can you have your whole team come forward? There's Art. Is Scott here as well? He's out ill, oh no. So I have the privilege of presenting our IT department with their fourteenth Digital Cities Award. I happened to be in Pittsburgh when the team was presented the award, and this is a huge accomplishment. We have won fourteen years, I believe, in the last fifteen years, and it would have been fifteen if we had applied. So the only year we didn't win, we didn't apply. We did get fourth place in this for communities our size, and there are ten criteria that this is judged on, and I'm gonna let David Putney explain it a little further, but this is really impressive, and it shows how hard our, our city works. I was gonna list the, the ten, unless you were going to, because I think it's important to understand how comprehensive the award is. And this is, uh... So the ten different areas included open, open government transparency and open data, mobile, mobility, mobile applications, engage, social media, portal, citizen engagement, collaborative, shared services, collaborative initiatives, secure, cybersecurity measures and initiatives, staff, supported, hiring and retaining competent IT prof- personnel, something we excel at, connected, broadband wireless infrastructure, efficient IT budget cost control performance measures, resilient disaster recovery and continuity of operations, and innovative, best practices, best practices and initiatives. And it's just neat that this, this excellence in IT is something that's embedded in our culture here in Westminster, and I'd love David to talk a little bit more about what his team has done to help us win this each year.
Thank you, Anita. It's been a real pleasure to be able to work with such a talented team in the Information Technology Department. Quite a few achievements this year, and if I stood up here and listed them all, you'd be pretty tired by the time I was done, so I just want to say that we have a very dedicated team, very innovative team, and a very highly technical, talented team of individuals within the Information Technology Department. We've had some significant achievements through two thousand and sixteen, and it's through all their work that we're able to achieve such an outstanding rating nationally in the Digital Cities Award. But it's not just the staff in the Information Technology Department, it also is our City Council, who really supports the technology initiatives that we have, and really recognizes the role that technology can play in our organization. And a lot of recognition needs to go out to our departments as well, for all the employees throughout the department that really embrace technology and use that to help improve the productivity and the services, both internally and externally for our organization, so a lot of, a lot of people who recognize, be proud of this award.
Art, would you like to say something?
For Dan, I'm sorry, Dan. So, I apologize.
In order of the audience are invited to speak at the council meeting. Citizen communication is reserved for comments on any issue or items pertaining to city business, except for those which a formal public hearing is scheduled. This would be scheduled under section ten. If you are here to testify or to hear about or have any comments for any item in item ten, with the exception of ten A, your comments would come at the public comment period, which we will open in just a minute. You are limited to five minutes. We ask that you identify yourself and your address before making your comments. The timer will light up as a green light when you start, it will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and it will turn red when we think you have talked enough. We would ask you to please cease your comments at that point, but if you're gonna need any assistance when you come to the mic, we ask you first, it'll turn the mic on. Speak directly into the microphone, this is not a directional, but it only picks up when it's close to you, adjust the mic if you need fit. And again, if you're here for anything other than ten A, please make your comments during the public comment period. If you are here for the official development plan for Crown Point, that will have its own public hearing when we get to that item on the agenda. So at this time, I'll open up the microphone, and you are welcome to come forward on any item that is on the agenda for tonight, or anything else you want to bring forward.
Good evening. I'm, my name is Tom Clark, I live at twenty-seven fifty West one hundred and sixteenth Court. I'm proud to call myself a citizen of Westminster for the past twenty-eight years. I am the CEO of the Metro Denver Economic Development Corporation, but I'm here to talk about another organization of which I am a member and the chair of, and that is the Homeowners Opportunity Alliance. Three years ago, the Metro Denver, the Metro Mayor's Caucus came to us and said, "We can't understand why we're not getting any condominiums built on our transit line. Could you help us find out what that is so that we can fix it?" We created a very large organization called the Homeowners Opportunity Alliance, which spans a group from Habitat to Humanity Housing Colorado, Metro Mayor's Caucus, housing authorities, cities, counties, economic development groups, fifty-two of us in all. We spent a lot of time looking at this and finding out that the construction defects law in Colorado was uniquely structured to make it very difficult to build condos and make it very expensive to do so. We found that today's kind of construction creates a unit that is cost four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, or four hundred thousand dollars to buy a new condo, and that high cost is a function of the high probability of litigation brought through class action suits, which is the unique part of Colorado's construction defects bill. So normally, we think of condos in about the two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. Today, they're well above that, well above a single-family home. We have been to the legislature for two years, trying to get them to help us change the law to make it work better. We have been frustrated both times. We will be back again this year. But in response to it, cities and counties along the front range and throughout Colorado, as a matter of fact, eighteen of them, comprising three million of our citizens, have passed ordinances or plat notes to stimulate construction of condominiums in their communities. We're worried about this for lots of reasons. First of all, very difficult if you're a young person today to buy a four hundred thousand dollar condo. If you're a senior living in some of our communities, in a two-story house with a master upstairs and a master bathroom, you're living in an unsafe house, you want to be on a single floor in a condominium. Today, your only real option in most of Colorado is an apartment, and so your lifelong savings that have gone into building your house, creating a corpus to give to your children and grandchildren, is easily disappears as the average rental in, two-bedroom rental today in Adams County is hundred, is one thousand three hundred dollars a month. We're here to ask you, you have in front of you in an ordinance that I know you've been working very hard on in the last several months, and I applaud your work, and although I can't speak directly to it, I hope it passes tonight. Thank you.
Evening, Council. My name is Carl Kobel. I live at three zero eight five Arapo Street in Denver, Colorado, and recently, I've had the privilege of working with your great staff, trying to get affordable housing to your downtown Westminster area, and I, your staff is great, want to just applaud all of them right now. I work for Kobel and Company, we're a sixty-five-year-old development corporation. We primarily, we only develop in Colorado, do primarily residential, but have been doing all sorts of other types of development as well, and we recently have been doing a lot of affordable housing. And as I can tell you, the demand for affordable housing is far outstripping the supply, and as Tom Clark correctly identified, construction defects laws are a major reason for that. Typically, twenty percent of all attached product built in most cities is for sale. That, over the last ten or fifteen years in Denver and the Denver metro area, it's two to three percent. So there's something amiss in our markets here. Low-income housing tax credits and other subsidies that are available to developers like us are heavily oversubscribed. There's typically five dollars of ask for every dollar of available credit, and what that means is that, again, that there's so many people that want to live here that can't. We need to let the market start solving some of these problems. We are building three hundred townhomes in, in the Denver metro area right now, and can't really, the lowest we can get a price there is about four hundred and fifty dollars, or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There have been products announced in Denver and in Lakewood, condo projects, and both of those cities have passed an ordinance, and those, the prices on those are less than three hundred thousand dollars for some of the units. So we are seeing already that these ordinances are starting to have an effect. The, the development community applauds, and I especially applaud the risk that you guys have taken, both at the Seventy-second and federal, and especially downtown Westminster. And I really think that those developments would be remiss without the opportunity to have some higher-density, for-sale, lower-priced, market-affordable projects within them, and this ordinance would be an important and a necessary step in order to make that happen. One of the things I love about coming up here is that, like you guys, in our main foyer in our office building, we have the George Lundine Promise of the Prairie sculpture, and I just love walking by it every day. It, you know, it sort of gives all of us hope and, and, you know, motivates us to be able to provide that to folks that, that want to live in Denver and in the Denver metro area and Westminster. And I really think that owning an affordable home is an important component of fulfilling the promise of the prairie, and I know that you up in here in Westminster, you want to build citizens, not just residents. You want people to put their roots down, and if they own a home and they're paying a mortgage, they're gonna do that more than if they're just paying monthly rent. So I really think and would strongly encourage you to pass the construction defense ordinance. I applaud you guys for looking at it, and I think it'll be important and major component of fulfilling a truly mixed-income developments in some of the areas that you guys have already taken the major risks. So, thank you for your time.
Evening. My name is David McLean. I live at forty-one thirty-two South Quebec Street in Denver. The reason I'm here tonight, she asked me to come up, I'm an attorney in Denver with a law firm, Higgins-Hopkins, McLean and Roswell, and have spent my career primarily engaged in construction litigation, and primarily defending construction defect litigation. Among my clients have been some of the largest multifamily builders in Colorado, the majority of which have not been building condominiums and townhomes for the last almost dozen, or almost ten years. And, and I've seen firsthand the falloff in the market of condominiums and townhomes in particular. As a result of that, have spent a lot of time with Tom Clark's organization, the Homeownership Opportunity Alliance, and also through the Home Builders Association, trying to figure out what the right mix is by way of a solution that would get builders back in the market and willing, again, to build condominiums or townhomes, as Mr. Kobel described, in that sub-three-hundred-thousand-dollar market, which is absolutely missing at the moment. So, I can tell you that with respect to working with, with builders and developers in Colorado and trying to figure out what types of changes would spark an interest to get back into that market, I think that your ordinance has hit the primary three goals in that. First, with respect, with respect to the mechanism by which ordinances can be used in construction defect litigation, and whether they ought to provide a private right of action or not, I think is, is one key to that. Another key is the protection of the right to arbitrate claims, which is also in the ordinance, and then finally, the informed consent piece, instead of having the decision of, of whether to proceed with a construction defect action, instead of having that left solely to the board of a homeowners association, making that a, a decision of, of all of the owners. And I think that there have certainly been different, different bells and whistles discussed by different jurisdictions and at the State House, and I think that the way that your ordinance has crafted a balance between those three, I think is appropriate, and I would urge your support. And if there are any questions on any of the legal ins and outs of that, or how each of those is important, I'd be happy to answer those. Short of that, I thank you for your time and urge your support.
Any other comments on any item that anyone wants to come forward on at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will pub, close the citizen communication piece. Next item on the agenda is report of city officials. Mr. Tripp?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, just to remind everybody that we have a post-meeting ups, not upstairs, in the room next door, where we'll have a couple of presentations on a new branding effort by our communications and outreach staff and our police team. Happy holidays to you, thank you for the great work in two thousand and sixteen, we look forward to next year.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from City Council? Ms. Bird?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, also, before I say anything, I want to thank everybody for making time to come out and join us this evening. I wanted to make everyone aware of more great work that our city is doing to benefit the kids that go to school here in Westminster. So, in the twenty seventeen year, our HR department will be working together with our department heads to create, I'm gonna make sure I don't leave anything out here, an apprenticeship, internship, work-study, and trainee program for our high school kids here at the city of Westminster. I'm so excited by this. This program is going to do so much good, not only for our kids who really need an opportunity to get some hands-on training and experience in the workforce, but it's also going to be great for our city in terms of helping to develop a nice pipeline of students and potential employees who we will know and perhaps be able to hire and give opportunity to in the future. So, thank you again, city staff, all of our wonderful departments, thank you for what you do to bring opportunity to our kids here in Westminster. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say this, first of all, thank you very much for coming. It continues to amaze me the passion and dedication of our residents, and for you to come and spend a Monday evening with us, I, I really appreciate everybody coming out, so thank you very much. I just want to take my time to just commend our, our fire department. I don't know how many people saw it on the news last night, there was a lot of stories that were out last night, and, and I'll just recap for those who didn't. The fire department received a letter from a kid named Colton, suffers from a number of health issues, and, um, really, really struggles in his health, and one of the things in his letter that he wrote was, "Number one, I want to ride a fire truck." That I want to ride a fire truck. And yesterday, under the guidance of Nick Wingo, who's one of our fire department employees, he coordinated this effort, they brought in Colton, he got to ride on the fire truck, which was just his dream, and they gave him a little fire truck to, to take home, and just showed him a wonderful time. And this was all because they got this letter from him, they went and acted, they said, "We want to do something for this kid, we want to give him a Merry Christmas," and they really organized this whole effort to bring him in, and I think that just simplifies the character of the people that we have working in our fire department throughout this city. So I just wanted to commend our fire department, specifically Mr. Wingo and that incredible effort to give this kid incredibly, incredibly Merry Christmas.
Mr. Baker?
Really, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's nice to have everyone here, and we all wish everyone happy holidays, and that's from everyone at the city. My remarks tonight are for my colleagues on council. For everyone really listening, my, everyone listening to my really remarks, please do not think that you are intruding on a private conversation, because you are not. This really conversation needs to be public, because it impacts the entire city. I feel that, well, the relationship between myself and my council colleagues is broken. I would like to change that really reality. I don't know if all of the council members feel the brokenness of our really relationship with each other, so I feel it is my duty to begin a conversation and initiate a dialogue. And please let this be a dialogue. I'm not interested in harming what are already terribly hurt feelings. I am not making accusations, nor am I wanting to fight with anyone. I hope we can be, I hope we can be successful with a CPR in our relationship. And remember, CPR today can be done hands-only, mouth-to-mouth is not needed. And the silly metaphor aside, I sincerely wish to instill a new life into our council relationship and a better future for all of us. Let's make this dialogue about the And remember, CPR today can be done hands only. Mouth-to-mouth is not needed. And the silly metaphor aside, I sincerely wish to instill a new life into our council relationship and a better future for all of us. Let's make this dialogue about the future. Let's leave the past as learning examples and not let it be wound that really fester. It is morally saddening to me that this broken relationship is between adults of great compassion, determination, learning and experience. We are way too tough and smart to have let this happen to us, but it did. I hope we are tough enough and smart enough to really repair the damage that has been done. I think our relationship is important, because, well, the voters and residents of Westminster will be better served by having seven members of council working together. We don't have to work in unison or lockstep, but we do have to work together. I view, okay, dissent not only as beneficial, but as essential, especially within the context of really majority rule. And our city moves ahead by majority rule. I have maintained my optimism about how our council can work together, because I know the true commitment of every member of council has in of the supporting open, transparent and inclusive government and community. If our council cannot be successful in really modeling and achieving these goals in our relationship, it will be even harder for Westminster as a whole to achieve these goals. Inclusiveness is the place I suggest we begin. To me, inclusiveness means having every member of council occupy a meaningful place in our discussions and really deliberations. This is where I feel I am excluded. To me, it feels like instead of my observations and opinions being sought out, my council My council members dread, got to find my place in the speech, disappointing, dread every time I speak. I feel that you do not want to take your time listening to my observations or opinions. I feel my observations and opinions are not even heard many times. Moreover, I feel you do not want to engage with me in the really dissection and exploration of issues that come to council. I have felt several times that, well, that really your decisions have already been formed before council explored the issue. I also feel that because you do not want to spend your time, or is it waste your time, listening to me and hearing my opinions, that you by default use your bias to really prejudge my really positions on many issues. Instead of hearing what I have to say, you have set in your minds on the most negative reasons for any opinions or motives I have. I do not see this conduct as inclusion. I do not see this conduct as really respecting me and valuing me as a member of council. Now, really, every relationship is a two-way street. I thought I had been careful with the attitudes and sensitivities of the members of council. And if I have insulted any member of council, I apologize, and I expect them to speak to me in a side conversation. But no one has reached out to me. I have had no side conversations. Indeed, I remember several incidents where I have reached out to you, but no, but had no response. And this is where it is important to remember, to let the past serve as examples from which we can improve, rather than become a burning inventory of wounds that never heal. I say this in spite of the events of the past three weeks, during which I reached out several times to you and received only silence in return. And that still hurts me very much. Inclusiveness and inclusion is absolutely essential if we are to be the society we claim we want to be. And inclusion is really hard. It's hard to reach out to the different among us and to value them. We give lip service to this, certainly. Our culture does. But it's so human to hang with your friends. This council can change that, because I know every member of this council, and I'm appealing to them to please let me participate and let me bring my dissent in many occasions, because I truly feel we will make better decisions if we do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, this is a difficult comment to go after. And I had a list of things I want to talk about, but I do briefly want to address my colleague's statements, very briefly. Councilor Baker does often represent a minority viewpoint on this council. And one of the things I've been proud of with my fellow colleagues is the fact that we have never allowed that fact to marginalize Councilor Baker's voice. In fact, I feel we have set a model for civil discourse. Inclusion doesn't mean agreement. And sometimes opinions and statements are made that I feel it's, I have a moral obligation, a duty, to let the citizens of Westminster know that we disagree. These are values. And I can be your colleague, I can even be your friend and have difference of opinion on values and also on the policy that we should enact here in Westminster. I am sad to hear the pain and the hurt and the frustration in your voice. I will acknowledge that I did not respond to all of your emails. But Councilor Baker, oftentimes I do not feel like you want a dialogue, you want to both convince and to trap. And I'm willing to talk with you, but I'm not prepared. Conversation doesn't always end in me changing my mind. So, with that, I'd like to go on to the events that we have going on in Westminster. As most of you probably realize, this is our last meeting until the new year. And so I want to let you know about a few services that'll be important over the holidays. The first is where you can recycle your Christmas tree, which is going to be at our City Park Rec Center, starting December 24th and going all the way to January 22nd. You can bring your Christmas tree to be recycled. If you want to help support the Boy Scouts, Troop 484, they will actually come to your house and pick it up at your curb for you. There's a phone number you can call, which is 303-706-3389, to schedule that Christmas tree pickup. I would also like to mention that on January 13th, there is a free mental health first aid training class. It's an all-day class. It actually goes from eight till five at night, and that's at Community Reach Center. So if you've wanted to expand your skill set and be able to help people, maybe you're in a front-facing occupation where you deal with the public, or maybe you have a family member that you'd like to be able to assist, or you just want to be a better, able to help your community, it's a great opportunity. And it is free, it's all day long, they do not provide lunch, there's no drop-in, so you do have to RSVP for it. There's a link on our website. And then I'd like to finally state, during this holiday season, I'd ask that we all remember our first responders, our plow operators, our dispatch that are working through the holidays while we get to stay warm and snug with our family. So, thank you so much.
Ms. Pendler?
Hello, and thank you. Councilor Sykes covered a lot of ground. I just want to take a minute and thank all of you for coming out. It is our last meeting, so I want to take a minute to wish you Merry Christmas, happy holidays, hope you have a joyous new year. We have a lot of really amazing things going on in our city. And one of the things that I am most proud of, and I've mentioned this before, but we got the final report of the details, is the Santa season with the Santas on the fire truck. This is a cooperative effort using six different city departments, fleets, IT, GIS, municipal courts, dispatch and fire. Countless hours of volunteer time, we get donations from local shops, from Hammond's Candy. But we, most impressive are the 2,400 children Santa visited on a fire truck right here in our community, thanks to all of this cooperative effort. Not to be outdone, the Santa Cops operation from our police officers is going on next week. I continue to be humbled and stunned by the remarkable vigilant, generous spirit of our staff, that whenever they see a need, they work to fill it. And it's been really remarkable to see all of this going on. We all got a treat with the shops' holiday party this past week. This is something that we all do together. And one of the things I have truly enjoyed about being on council is the opportunity to get to know so many staff members. I know there are others that I've yet to meet, and will hopefully get the opportunity soon. One of the things that sets this council apart is that we really try to make it a priority to come to all of these things. And I have to say, as my last comment, Mr. Baker doesn't usually join us. I don't know if you've seen council out in the public, but he is rarely with us. And so if he wanted to participate in a more collective dialogue, I would invite him to come to where we are, to work with our city staff and to work with us on having a dialogue in our council meetings. So, thank you.
Any other comments from council? I want to try to sum up some of this. We are here typically in most months, every Monday night, unless there's a fifth week in the month, and sometimes we're here for those. This month, we're only going to be here three times, because next Monday is, we're closed for a holiday, and the following Monday, we're closed for the beginning of the new year. At every meeting, every council member is given the same opportunity to express their opinions, ask questions, seek dialogue. No one, in my time of having served with this city for over 30 years, has ever been denied an opportunity to speak their position. Just in this council room last week, we heard over 20-minute dialogue from Councilor Baker that included everything from the 1964 My Lake massacre, George Wallace, for close to 25 minutes. And we all sat here, and we listened to it. So how it can come up to the point that we don't listen to him, maybe it's the message you're trying to send that's not appropriate or not germane to what we're doing here. I don't need a lesson on history and the Vietnam War, I was there. I served during that time two terms. I don't need a lesson on George Wallace. I was raised in that part of the country, and I don't support it. So if you want to talk about what's germane to what's on the council agenda, speak to those items. We are not going to violate federal law. We've been advised by not only the police department and the city attorney, we have no rule on that. These are things that we know that he doesn't agree with. He has his own agenda. And politically, my opinion doesn't belong at city council. We're not going to deal with the immigrant status. Again, a federal law. But every council member has an opportunity to turn this mic on, say their piece, say the same thing in the pre-meetings, the post-meetings and the executive sessions. So I don't agree that anyone is cutting anybody off. But to be part of the group, you have to be willing to be part of the group. And you have to show that you want to be that. Next item on our agenda will be the consent agenda. This is a routine group of matters that can be done with one motion by the council. We have had a, excuse me, a request to remove Council Item 8I from the agenda. This will be voted on separately. We will also have a motion for Item 8J. Because of the fact that we are meeting two weeks back to MAC, we do not meet the criteria to be able to vote on this one on a second reading, having had the first reading just last week. So we will defer that until our first meeting in January. So at this time, I will open up the microphone and open up the items for, the motion for the consent agenda. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that, well, the city council table Item 8J until, until the meeting of really January 9th, 2017.
Ms. DeCameron?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If you would, please vote with your lights as soon as I can get the vote up for you. And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item will be the consent agenda and the removal of one item from that motion. Well, Mr. Baker?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have the move that really city council adopt, well, the consent agenda, Items 8A through 8H.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're going to learn to play this thing quicker every time. And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Garcia, I think you were up next.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. On Item 8I, I move to authorize staff to join the Colorado Communities for Climate Action.
Is there a second? Ms. Sykes?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please, go ahead.
I apologize, my computer died real quick. I wanted to real quickly highlight the fact that Westminster is joining Colorado Communities for Climate Action. This is a group that talks to our partners on the state and federal government and makes sure that they are active partners. Cities can't do this alone, so we need to make sure that there is funding available, that there are not roadblocks available, to making sure we can do everything in our power to make our buildings efficient and investments in clean air, so, and in climate adaptation and mitigation. So I'm very excited that we're making sure that the federal government and the state government aren't off the hook, that they're going to be partners in this, and that it's not all on our dime. So, thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I really looked at this really proposal, and as I listened to the, of the presentation of the group, I was disappointed for several reasons. First of all, in their listed agendas, I disagree with several of them. I think they are spending a lot of time on areas that are not going to profoundly impact with the situation. And my biggest concern is that their focus seems to be too short, too narrow, too close. This problem is a worldwide problem, and it needs to be given that gravity and that meaning and that power. And to place upon ourselves burdens that aren't going to significantly impact the problem, I think is asking way too much. I will be voting no.
Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that this council has really prided itself on is intergovernmental relations, is realizing we can't do everything on our own, we're not on an island here in Westminster. We work with other jurisdictions to tackle issues that are important to our residents. And I'm proud that we're joining this organization and joining other municipalities, the city of Fort Collins, the city of Lafayette, the city of Golden, Eagle County, Summit County, almost one-ninth of Colorado, of jurisdictions representing Coloradans are already a part of this organization. And I am pleased that we're going to be one of the, we're going to be on the front end of this fight and joining this group, and be supportive of this motion.
Any other comments from council? And this one would be just a vote of your lights, please. We have a 6-1 on the vote, in favor of the vote. Next item on the agenda will be moving to public hearings. We have no appointments and resignations. First item on the agenda will be a public hearing on the action of the plan unit developer for the fifth amended Crown Point preliminary development plan. Staff? Staff, please.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Colwell with the Planning Division, and this is a public hearing, and action on the planned unit development for the fifth amended Crown Point preliminary development plan, and the second amended official development plan for Crown Point filing number four. We're waiting for that. The lighting in here is so dramatically improved. Thank you very much. I appreciate this remodel.
Technology has taken over the world.
My screen is frozen. I'm not sure why.
Patrick, while you're working on that, we're going to take a short recess, and we'll see if we can get the electronics up, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, for your excuse, we're going to take about a five-minute break for a pause for everybody. Okay, Ms. Colwell?
I just did the introduction, and the slides work again. This item did require public notice, and I want to enter into the public record the agenda memo and the attachments. Notice was published in the Westminster window on December eighth, 2016. Public notice was posted on the property in two locations on December ninth. Signs of the different locations. And a mailed notice was mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the site. You can have a photo of the site and the area where the mailing was performed. And this is the vicinity map showing the site outlined in red. As you can see, at the eastern edge is Wadsworth Parkway, and at the southern edge is a Hundredth Avenue. The Crown Point subdivision lines the property kind of to the west and northwest. And immediately to the east and south is our retail properties. There is a street that is internal to this development that is frequently labeled as One Hundred and First Avenue. We refer to it here as a private main street. It is owned and privately maintained by the retail development, and will, also, the HOA for this future development will maintain a piece of that internal right-of-way. Sixty-four dwellings are proposed, two new public right-of-ways within this development are proposed. Also have a One Hundredth Way and a One Hundred and First Place label. There are neighborhood parks that are central to the site, and alleys provide access to the garages. The PDP amendment removes the church uses and adds the residential, single-family development uses to the property. This is a general site plan. You can see the, and I'm not sure how clear that is on your screen, but the public rights-of-way are in sort of a brighter color, and then the private internal street is in a lighter pink color. And generally, you can see the green spaces within the development. Many of the homes front on those green spaces, and the other homes front on private streets. There was a neighborhood meeting held for this development. It was in November of 2015. There were about twenty residents that attended. A number of issues were discussed: traffic on a Hundredth, the housing design and the price, the connection of the existing development, and access to the signal at the private main street at One Hundredth Avenue, and pedestrian access to the site. There were other referrals made to other organizations. The Excel Energy reviewed this. The Jefferson County Public School District reviewed this and really had no comments, except to say that they were supportive. And a number of the schools that serve this site are under capacity, and this would add to those schools, and they would still not be at capacity. And they did those projections through the early 2020s. So staff is recommending, number one, you're holding a public hearing, and that the city council approved this fifth amended Crown Point preliminary development plan. The recommendation is based on a finding that the criteria set forth in Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code have been met. And the second is that the council recommend, excuse me, council approved second amended official development plan of Crown Point filing four. And this recommendation is based on a finding that the criteria set forth in Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code have been met. And this does meet two of the council goals. These are city strategic plan goals. One is the vibrant, inclusive, and engaged community, and a beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city. And with that, I have no other comments. Any questions for me?
Patrick, on the, on the one new slide there, you show the street section. Did I understand you correctly? Those will be private streets and not city streets?
It's a mix. If you look on the screen, there's a thicker line kind of down in the lower right corner, and that's a private street. And that street exists today, and a couple of businesses line that street on what I'll call the lower right portion. And those buildings are kind of shown in lightweight on that picture.
You really can't tell the weights of the lines on the, on the screen that we have? So let me ask you this. The private street piece is based on one color that I can see, it's kind of a lighter color?
Yes, and that's what I meant to say. It's the lighter color.
And the public streets are, what's the, actually, within the community?
Within the community. They're sort of a, on my screen, they're a little darker pink. I don't know what they show up on your screen.
Okay.
So, does that answer your question?
That's fine, right now. Any other questions of staff before I bring the applicant up to do their presentation? Garcia?
And you noted in the slide, and it talks about the agenda memorandum, too, that there were resident concerns about additional traffic. Can you talk a little bit about how we respond to that, and how we alleviated those concerns about potential traffic issues?
Sure. I think Dave Losman is here, our engineering division, and he could address this.
Mr. Losman?
Good, please. Engineering staff has reviewed a traffic study that was presented to us by the developer, and found no significant impact based on that study.
Ms. Seitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a quick question, and I apologize if I missed this in the staff report, but will the private businesses that own the private road allow residents to use that for access to the homes?
Yes, that was part of the original preliminary development plan, and there is parking available on both sides of that internal private street. And it is currently maintained and operated by the owner, which is the church that is selling this property.
Okay.
And it is available for joint use by all owners and property owners in that larger preliminary development plan.
Thank you. And you brought up another point. I believe there were thirty-four visitor spaces in addition, is that about correct?
That's about correct.
And am I correct that it was about sixty-four units?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. Do we feel that, because these are single-family homes that will handle the parking needs for holidays and events where you might have multiple houses at once, having guests over? Or do, does that meet our parking requirements, or do we have any concerns about the parking ability?
The parking does meet our parking requirements. There is a combination of on-street parking in some locations, and on one of the, in the official development plan, there is a sheet that does show where those particular parking spaces are located on-street. They are noted. The locations where you can't park will have no parking signs per the fire department.
Okay. And then Garrison and One Hundred and First remain?
Garrison will not have any parking allowed. It's currently a collector's street. There's, as I never seen a car parked on it, but there will be no parking allowed on Garrison Street.
But to my larger question, we feel there's adequate parking for guests and visitors.
Yes, and this is very similar to a handful of other developments in the city, which have alleys and attached garage, and limited on-street parking. And we have not, I'm not aware of any parking issues in those subdivisions. And a couple of those subdivisions do not have what I call a little overflow in terms of off-evening, when the businesses are not operating. This does have that minor opportunity on occasion to use that overflow.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask about how much more water is this version of the flat going to use than was the original, or than is the current, I should say?
Counselor, yes, we received your email this afternoon. The, the answer to that question is, we've been working through this with the council relative to proposals to change the, or change various land use designations in the city's comprehensive plan. So this question has come up several times in the last several months. In this situation, the comprehensive plan was changed in 2013, and this parcel was evaluated having the residential density on it that you're looking at tonight at that time. So there's actually no change at all in the comprehensive water supply budget.
Okay. And then I'd like to ask about, why was this really density of housing chosen, because it is greater than what is in the surrounding area?
When we, so just going back to 2013, we were looking at a number of small infill sites, and there are a number of parcels that lay out pretty well for alley-loaded product, which is typically on smaller lots and therefore slightly higher density. And we're seeing tremendous support for that type of housing product citywide. City only has a couple of subdivisions, and they're notable, Highland Village and Bradburn being the most notable examples, but they're all selling very, very quickly. And so we're seeing a number of developers that are looking to try to bring this product into Westminster and go away from traditional front-loaded product.
And with this alley arrangement, how would like, how would like fire take care of it? And I, and I understand that all single-family homes are being made with sprinklers. That greatly reduces the chance of a really structured fire there, but you do, most of our calls are really paramedic calls. How would they serve the houses of these neighborhoods, because they don't have access on a public street?
I can't speak to how the, the MPs would actually get to the houses. Our fire department is here. What I would tell the council is, we've worked really hard with the fire department to adopt standard street sections in these new urbanist communities that contemplate the provision of service. And so when a developer comes in and asks to do a slightly narrower street section than you might see in some of our older suburban communities, we've actually worked through those issues with the fire department. And so what, when you're looking at an official development plan like this evening, this complies with, with those standards. As to the actual route in and out of the subdivision, I'm sure the fire department could comment on that, if you would like that.
Yes, I would like that. But before we get to them, how is basically snow removal going to be done with these alleys? Because it's my understanding that all these homes have their two-car garages in the alleys, and one would think that's pretty narrow to begin with. So even a moderate stone, like the last one we had, would be pretty, would like freeze it up, or...
Well, typically, on the private streets, the snow removal is the responsibility of that particular development, so that HOA, the homeowners' association would be responsible for that snow removal. And if you look at the alley arrangement here, and I think it's on the screen, so the little, the white, narrow lines are the alleys. And if you see, some of the alleys are, have an opening at each end, and those that don't, which are kind of at the upper end, the angle, sort of the upper left, those are dead-end alleys. And at the end of those alleys, there is some green space that is landscaped with grasses in the summer. And in the winter, it's available for pushing snow, so that snow pile will be at the end of the alley. And that's one solution to that, and it seems to be adequate. In the other subdivisions that are alley-loaded, that have been built in the city within the last ten years, we have not had any concerns or complaints about snow removal in those dead-end alleys. They've been designed in this way also. At the end of the alley, there's six to ten feet of green space that's available for that. And then the other alleys, the snow between the two, between the driveway accesses, if you look on a lot, I don't have a lot layout here, but between... you look on a lot, I don't have a lot layout here, but between the two driveways, there is sufficient room to stack snow in the winter also, so that there is a clean through alley. And again, that's the case in most of our alley product that has been built in the last ten years in the city. And then, as long as I'm speaking about the alleys, the fire department does have a standard for alley width and alley length of dead-end alleys. This meets their criteria. None of the alleys that are dead-end are any longer than the fire department would allow. And all the other alleys that are in, as you can see, of greater length, have a dual opening so that you can drive completely through, so that fire trucks don't have to back up to exit those alleys. And there's also a dual access, so they could come in from both ways if one end was blocked. And then the length of those alleys is, I'll call it the dead-end alleys, is short enough based on the fire hydrant placement, or at least the fire department has deemed that adequate to service those properties in emergency situations. They have looked at it extensively, and this does, is very similar to other alley product that's been built in the city in the last ten years. And it's, from what I have heard, and no, I'm not sure that there's been any issues with alley width, the alley maintenance, and, you know, alley length, from the fire department in terms of emergency services. Thank you.
Mr. Menard?
I think you're on the carpet for this. Good. Okay. So, yeah, with the alleys on this project, they are twenty feet in width, and for us, that's acceptable, so that's a good work. And when buildings are sprinkled, it gives us a little more latitude with the fire code. It does allow for exceptions to take place, and this would be one of those exceptions. But however it is, is that twenty feet is our minimum width, and we are being granted that in the alleyways themselves, so we are comfortable with that. One thing that it would provide for us too, if we look at that north, northeast corner, that length up there, that's not a concern for us because of the sprinkler buildings, and that's part of having these residences sprinkled, that it does give us more latitude to do projects like this with narrow streets, parking on the streets, that type of thing. For the main thoroughfares, we'll have parking on both sides of the street, and we're not concerned about that either.
Basically, how would you get the alleys to act?
Yes, sir, we would, absolutely.
Anything else, Mr. Baker? Any other questions of staff before we move on to the applicant? Back, you got any from the applicant that has a presentation as well?
No, Mr. Mayor, just note the planning commission did review this matter, and they recommended it's appro, both items approval on unanimous vote.
There being no one here from the applicant, I'm presuming there's, we will open this up at this point for anyone from the public. Are you from the applicant, ma'am? My mistake, please come forward. Please identify yourself with your name and your address and who you're representing, please, ma'am. Pull it down, there you go, speak right into it, you both, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, my name's Karen Henry, with Henry Design Group, we're planners and landscapers working on this project. Here with me this evening are Pastor Dave Shear and Craig Hughes with the Christ Community Covenant Church, lots of Cs, who are the property owners. Our client's dying with Joburg International, who is the plan developer. Becky Hogan, who is our planning consultant. Todd Bunker with Martin &amp; Martin, who's our civil engineer. All of us are available for questions, should you have any. First of all, I'd like to thank Patrick. Oh, it's this one? First of all, I'd like to thank Patrick Caldwell, who's been a pleasure to work with. He's really guided us through this process and helped us get before you this evening. This is a vicinity map, I think Patrick's already covered that. I'm gonna try and be brief and not duplicate what he has stated this evening. This is the comprehensive master plan. This parcel is proposed on the land use plan as residential eight, which would allow eight dwelling units per acre. The proposal before you tonight is less than that. It's four point nine two dwelling units per acre, which is in compliance with the plan. After working with staff for several months, we created and submitted for the water service commitments under the T-Mund regulations, which is D four, in 2015. We were awarded in that category for sixty-four water commitments, and started this project in January of 2016. As Patrick mentioned, prior to that, we had a neighborhood meeting that was held in November of 2015. We had about twenty residents attend, and as Patrick mentioned, some of their concerns were primarily related to Garrison Street, whether there would be parking and the ability to access Hundredth Avenue at that intersection. Other than that, they were fairly pleased with the plan, and were happy to see that single-family residential was going into the site. Sorry. This is the PDP. This indicates land use areas, so basic circulation, existing conditions, and as you can see, it changed the land use char, character of the site from a church to single-family residential. This is the ODP. Again, there's sixty-four single-family homes, all the homes either front on a public street, landscape mews, or private park. The lot sizes vary in size from forty-seven feet wide, which is typical, to seventy to ninety feet in depth. The lots are wider on corners to allow for that wraparound porch and where adjacent to the single-family residences in the Crown Point neighborhood. All the homes are alley-loaded, and each home has a two-point lot. We really believe that this smaller-lot community provides a good transition from the arterial streets of Hundredth and Wadsworth and the Village Center located in the southeast corner to those single-family homes within the Crown Point neighborhood. Overall, the plan meets the principle of mixed-use neighborhood by providing compact, walkable neighborhood, and there's a mixture of uses, it's pedestrian-oriented, and there's interconnectivity throughout the site. There's a variety of park amenities, including two private parks and landscape mews throughout. Part of the T-Mund criteria or our goal was to integrate this residential into that Village Center. Here's some photos of it, very nicely done, and we like the possibility for that interaction. A lot of the design themes that were created with the commercial area were carried through into this neighborhood, including landscaping, lighting, benching, benches, trash bins, they all kind of matched, and it's all tied together. Slide you had seen before, the transportation slide, which we've discussed earlier. And not, December of, December fifth of this year, we received approval for a CLOMA, which is a conditional letter of map revision, with a hundred-year floodplain on this site, which is light-blue area, and it was revised to the dark-blue area, which accommodated the houses better, and both urban drainages proved that. Landscape plan, if anybody's been out there, you can see how nicely it's done, it's existing landscaping in Birmingham all along a Hundredth and Garrison. We have not touched that with this plan. That will remain in place. It will be maintained by the homeowners group for this parcel, and we've just built upon that and made it. It's consistent, the landscaping throughout that we're adding. We do have two small parka parks. Given the weird shape of this site, we felt it good to separate so that each quadrant of the site had its own little private parka park. The parks include an open play area, benches, shelters, trash receptacles, dog waste stations, and a loop trail, so, you know, they're in close proximity to the homes, so you can just walk up there and have a little play. Fencing in the neighborhood, this is just an overall fencing plan, the intent is to keep it fairly open and accessible. And finally, this is a typical street section, the architecture's varied along the street street, and it meets all the criteria of the anti-monotony code for the city. Each home has a front porch, which is available, four hundred square foot outdoor space in the rear, and attached to a car garage and a minimum of thirty-four percent mason required. In closing, we believe that the proposed neighborhood meets the PUD approval criteria stated in the staff report, and the plan also complies with all city regulations. As such, we respectfully request your approval this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, don't go away yet. Counselors, any questions of the applicant at this time? Okay, ma'am, go ahead and have a seat. Counselors, any other questions of either the applicant or staff before I open it up to the public? This time, since we have a number of visitors here, that I have a feeling some of you might be connected with this, how many people are here in regards to the application before us, okay? How many of you would like to come to the microphone and speak? Okay. Gentlemen, ladies, come right on down. Please just identify yourself with your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Dave Shear, and I live here in Westminster, just about a mile west of us here at six seven eight six West Ninety-seventh Circle. And I was hoping to be able to walk to work, but that didn't work out. So I'm grateful to be able to be with you tonight, Mr. Mayor, the manager, and the rest of you. It's a day, actually, we've been praying for. You have been all covered with prayer, just saying. I'm in my twelfth year as senior pastor at Christ Community Covenant Church, and we, I was just gonna say, we're just talking about the anti-monotony code, and I'll try and take part in that as well, trying not to be so monotonous. We purchased the property at a Hundredth and Garrison a couple of years before I came on staff, and by way of history, we had high hopes of building on this property and doing something really wonderful in association with Westminster. And so we're sad that that didn't work out. We had, we had sold the land that we were living on, on Eighty-Second and Sims, in order to buy that property. We invested our life and future in that property. So in two thousand and five, then, some years later, in the middle of this building campaign, we went through a change in leadership of senior pastor, and that sometimes impacts church's health. We saw our numbers deteriorate some. Hurricane Katrina kind of rushed through and changed the pricing of concrete and various things, and forced the price up on our building. And then in two thousand and seven and eight, the recession came along, and that hurt our charitable giving. It became impossible for us to move forward with the plan of building at a Hundredth and Garrison, and that was difficult for us to give up. But it came to terms with that, and so now for ten years, we've been trying to sell that land since two thousand and six. We've been holding that land, we've been responsible to our loner, and so at ten thousand dollars a month for the last ten years, we've been trying to deal with this circumstance for our church. In two thousand and thirteen, just three years ago, we were in a desperate place. We had lost the lease on our current property. We tried to look for other land in Westminster, we thought again about trying to build, none of those looked possible for us. It didn't look like we had a way of moving forward or a way of moving backwards, and I can say that for me as senior pastor, I was deeply despairing for the future of our church. Then a miracle happened. Thankfully, our God's in the business of miracles, so we're grateful. In a three-month period, we were able to work out a deal to purchase an existing church in Arvada less than two miles from where we were currently located. We purchased this sixty thousand square foot building on six acres for twenty-two dollars a square foot. That's good math. It felt like an eleventh-hour answer for us. Still, we had a new home, but the land at a Hundredth and Wadsworth continues to be an anchor for us in moving forward with our hopes for our church. In the ten years that that property's been on sale, we have aggressively marketed, but as you know, it's been hard to sell commercial land in the last ten or so. We had several offers, but the limits on the usage of the land made it nearly impossible to sell. So over the past ten years, we've paid out one point four million dollars resolving and make good on our financial obligations to our land. We're grateful that generosity of our congregation and the faithfulness of our God have allowed us to do that. I wouldn't be a worthy pastor, though, if I didn't say that the greatest catastrophe hasn't been the lost revenue. It's been a lot of money spent for a relatively small congregation, and I, I know that. But the real sadness has been the spiritual and ministerial consequence. I'm often left to wonder what great good deeds of divine proportion could have been done in the name of God in our community if we had been free to sell the property years ago. So, as you can imagine, we're very excited and hopeful for this land sale. The church has been pleased with the progress, and we too are pleased with our help from the city, especially pleased with the persistence of the development team of Joburg International. They have been persevering and professional, they have been team players, and that they've been creative at every step. They too have made sacrifices of their own to bring this project to where it can be before you tonight. So I would humbly ask, and more like beg, that the Westminster City Councilors support this project. Merry Christmas, thanks.
Next, please.
Hi. My name is Jeffrey Han. I live at nine zero four three West a Hundred and Third Avenue in Crown Point. I've been on the board for twenty years there. There's been several things proposed at this site over the years. As a person of the neighborhood, I'm pleased with this particular development. I like what I see. Our three, three items that I'd just like to know how it's gonna turn out, we have a, it's called Track A, it's an open space between our neighborhood and the new neighborhood. People walk through there now. I'd like to see, people will probably, unless they fence it off, people will continue to walk through there as on the board. I would be willing, or Crown Point would be willing, to connect a sidewalk through our portion to connect with a sidewalk in their portion, if that could be coordinated. We also have a common fence. Over the years, Crown Point, we've been paying as you go to replace our cedar fence with a vinyl fence. We've done everything other than what's between currently now our neighborhood and the new development. It would be nice if, of course, from my point of view, it'd be nice if they replaced the fence at their cost, however, realistically, Crown Point would be willing to split that cost. Right now, it's a broken-down cedar fence, the, these homes are gonna be in the range of four hundred and fifty thousand. Technically, Crown Point could take the position, we don't want to do anything, and I would think they would want to, to sell their homes, but we are going to replace it at some point in time regardless, but it'd be nice if we could at least split that cost. The other, the only other thing I have to say is Garrison Street, I'm a little concerned, that's the main entrance into Crown Point, I'm a little concerned, will people park? Their homes will face Garrison. I, right now, there are no, there is parking along, and people don't park there, but I am concerned that it could be a place for multiple cars to park entering into our neighborhood because their homes will face Garrison because the alley's in the back. Those are the only things I have to say. to say. Thank you.
Okay. As far as your potential deal with the developers, sir, you'd have to deal with them directly on that. But as far as questions that you had about the other parts of it, we'll try to get you an answer here yet tonight. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Take a turn, guys.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Craig Hughes. Dave mentioned my name. He has persevered as senior pastor of our church. I have persevered as the business representative of our church to handle this particular property. I've been a member of Community, Christ Community Covenant Church since nineteen ninety-eight. I was there when we actually sold our property and bought this property. I then felt a calling from the Lord to jump in and assist in any way I could in actually building the church. We went through the struggles that Pastor David mentioned with change of leadership and decline, and from a business and a financial perspective, it was virtually impossible for the church to move forward with the plan that was originally proposed. Considering the timing to redo those plans, to reevaluate how we were gonna do this, we chose the best direction was, would be to sell the land. We worked on this partial sale of the land. We tried to put the deal together in many different respects to continue, no avail. Then, of course, as Pastor Dave mentioned, we got to experience the crisis of two thousand eight, the Great Recession. And at that point in time, there actually was not in the entire metropolitan city of Denver and the surrounding cities was raw commercial land sold for an entire twelve-month period. So it was a very, very difficult time. Over the last ten years, Pastor Dave mentioned, we did have six different offers that we entertained trying to put together a deal and struggled immensely, whether it be cost of building, cost of the economy, incredible stringent lending practices at the time. Obviously, being a lending crisis during the recession proved to be very, very difficult. We've been under contract with Joburg International for now two years, and I've had the privilege of working with Joburg this entire time, contracted them, worked with them with this plan, watched them persevere, watched them endure the process of putting together what we had to put together to seek approval. And again, with the appreciation of the planning department helping us through, we are, as a church and as owners of the land, extremely pleased to see what this land can become and what it can, what can it be for the city of Westminster. We're very pleased with that. They've persevered, Joburg has, and we're excited to see this thing go forward. And as Dave said, I'm, I'm personally asking for the council to approve, to see this thing through. I think it's a great development for the city of Westminster, beautiful product. And again, from the church, from the ownership of the land, we are extremely happy to see this land finally, finally sell and be developed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Dr. Philip Rosenblum. I'm president of Arbor Family Medicine, located at a Hundred First in Wadsworth. We've been affiliated with this property since about two thousand ten. We built our building, the Arbor Family Medical Building. A couple of our tenants are here as well, representing Emilio's Restaurant. I just wanted to say that the partners of the, of the medical practice are, are very excited about and in favor of seeing sixty-four new families come to, come to town into our immediate area. Our tenants, which include Papa John's, our physical therapy office, and the restaurant as well, are very excited about that, that prospect of filling in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to get up and have that to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
A lot of my church guys back here here as well. Felt like I should say a thank you to them as well.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from anybody? Just to get a little bit of an idea of, since I saw a whole bunch of hands raised up there, of those who are here who did not testify, if you are in favor of this application, would you just raise your hands? Okay, by the same sign, if you are opposed to this application, would you raise your hand? Okay, thank you, guys, for coming tonight. At this time, if there are no other comments or questions from either council or staff or from the applicant, I will close the public hearing. At this time, I would move to open this up for a motion. Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move to approve the fifth amended Crown Point preliminary development plan. This recommendation is based on a finding that the criteria set forth in Section eleven dash five dash fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code have been met.
Ms. Bird?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. None. All those in favor, wait for the most. Wait, 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 wait. Now you may vote. And surprisingly, we have a seven oh vote in favor. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. We are only halfway through. We have one more. Ms. Sykes, would you take item two?
I will. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the second amended official development plan, Crown Point filing number four. This recommendation is based on a finding that the criteria set forth in Section eleven dash five dash fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code have been met.
Mr. Garcia?
Mayor, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion by council? Sykes?
I just wanna real quickly compliment our staff and the design team on this project. I think this is a project that meets a lot of our strategic plan goals. I like the quality, and I'm impressed with the constraints on the site that you were able to provide this product. So, thank you, and I'm, I'm hoping this will be a great addition to Westminster.
Ms. Pinter?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up and thank you all for coming out. I, I don't know how many of you are first-time council attendees, but we have this much fun every two weeks here at City Council. You're welcome back anytime. So I, I too, I'm really grateful for all the work that you put in and for the diligence and faith that your community has had to put this together over many, many years. It seems like, I hope this has been worth the wait for you, and I'm happy that we're able to support this project.
Just an add-on to the piece. The alley-loaded product, as, as it was testified tonight, is a very good example. That is five parks, just over and just not that far from where you're at. It has been very successful. I have family that live there. They've been very appreciative, and I would tell you, it's a hot market. People look for that, looking to move down. This is a great opportunity. You have some great-looking product here. I wish you the best. And at this point, there are no other comments? Please open with your lights. And now you can applaud, because now we have 'em both. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming and taking the time to spend a little bit of your time with us tonight. We hope this is not the last time you'll be here. And first, I'm more, Pastor, thank you for your prayers. Next item on our agenda will be item B. Under T will be Counselor's Bill number fifty-two. Do we have a motion from the council? Ms. Pinter?
Yes, sir. I move to pass Counselor's Bill number fifty-two on first reading for an ordinance adopting the new Chapter fifteen and Title eleven of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning construction defect claims associated with condominiums and townhomes.
Mr. Camera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any other comments or discussion from council? Ms. Parker?
Oh, sir, I had actually...
Sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, we had a couple.
Let me get back out of this one. Mr. Baker, I'll get you first, since you were in first.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I have various concerns about this proposal. As one of the gentlemen testified, these ideas are to find a balance, to strike a balance. And I think of the people who aren't here, and that's the people who will living, be living in this product in the future. And I think that our placing additional burdens on the homeownership management is going to deprive them of too many rights, so I will be voting no.
Ms. Pinter?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to take a minute. We had asked in the pre-meeting for Chris or one of the other staff members to talk through the extensive outreach that was done with the community. I feel like that's important to get on the record before we take a vote. Mr. Frankel, thank you, sir.
Yes, if I may, Mayor and councilors, as you're aware, this ordinance has been developed over the last year. And you may recall that in the fall of two thousand fifteen, staff began researching the various ordinances that other municipalities in Colorado had been adopting. And we prepared summary materials so that the council could understand the various options that are available and the various approaches that other cities had taken. And it was after our discussion of the approach that Denver had adopted that council decided that the three-part approach that Denver utilized might be the best fit for Westminster to consider. And as you may recall, the Denver Construction Defect Ordinance features three distinct features. I shouldn't be redundant, but it, it regulates the use of local building codes in terms of how they are used to prove construction defect claims. It mandates informed consent prior to initiating any kind of an action, and it provides for the enforcement of alternative dispute resolution declarations and covenants that may be recorded in a community. So what the next steps were that were engaged in by staff included outreach to stakeholders in the community. And in March of this year, staff reached out to Housing Colorado, representatives of the Community Association Institute, representatives of Build Our Homes Right, representative of the Home Builders Association, as well as an attorney who had reached out to council, expressing interest in the same issue. So in March of two thousand sixteen, those stakeholders were invited to review the draft that was then before the council for comments. And we compiled all of those comments that were received and presented all of them to council in July of two thousand sixteen. It was at the July meeting when council had several requested edits, and those edits, along with the comments that were received from the public, created our next draft. That next draft was distributed again to all of the stakeholders that we had identified, and they were invited to comment an additional round. Now, it was after those comments came back that our most recent meeting, we accepted the comments that were made. It was, I believe, the December twelfth meeting, so just a week ago, when council directed that this be put forward for consideration on, on first reading. So we're, we're here tonight, having engaged in essentially at least two rounds of public outreach so that people's comments could be considered in the draft that's before you tonight. So what you have in tonight's agenda packet has been shared with those same stakeholders a week ago after council directed that this be agendized for today. It was on the thirteenth of December that the final version was distributed again to those same stakeholders. And CMO staff, I wanna thank them for including outreach efforts through the city's weekly email newsletter. There were, there was a featured notification of tonight's hearing so that other members of the public who are subscribing to the city's email newsletter could also have notification and an opportunity to be heard tonight.
Thank you so much. And I just wanna clarify, it was the intention of council and the way it was executed that people from different backgrounds with different perspectives were contacted for outreach. And you can't tell from the acronyms of the different groups, but would you say that the feedback we received was uniform, or we got feedback from a lot of different perspectives, Mr. Frankel?
I, I'd characterize it as differing perspectives. I mean, you have representatives of varying stakeholders, so ranging from homeowners to builders and sort of everyone in between. We have, we have attorneys who are interested in this area of the law also offering comments.
And attorneys from both sides of?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. I had one more question for you, Mr. Frankel. Sorry. Thank you. And one of the questions that was important to me is we are working on this draft ordinance was the difference between an HOA is in a lawsuit and an individual files for relief. And this particular ordinance that we're working on has majority consent of unit owners required for the board of a homeowners' association to file for relief, but an individual can seek remedies at any time.
That's correct. And this, this ordinance differs from Denver's in that respect, because it was important to recognize that we, we were attempting to work on lawsuits initiated by executive committees. So it was our understanding that one of the, the major sources of claims in construction defects litigation were claims that were initiated by homeowners' boards, the, the executive boards of condominiums who perhaps felt that they had no choice but to bring a claim. So this ordinance is specifically designed to address those claims.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
I just wanna iterate what Counselor Pinter was stating. And her last question really, you know, it really highlights the deliberate nature of this whole process. There was a number of different iterations that we went through in this ordinance, because I think you're exactly what Counselor Baker just described, which is to strike a balance. That's why you're gonna see it is different from some of the other jurisdictions. We sought the outreach from so many different organizations. We took in that input, and that's how we came to the ordinance that we're working on tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to yourself and to the staff for that extensive outreach that happened. Thank you for all the stakeholders who took the time to participate in this process. It was incredibly helpful in, in guiding how we got to this point in the ordinance that's before you.
Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My fellow colleagues have said mostly what I'd wanna say. I do wanna focus on the intentionality and, and the deliberation that we took on this issue. This is really over a year of consideration and trying to strike the right balance. I really was struck with some of the statistics that Mr. Kobel gave us. So for instance, in most cities, twenty percent having, of, of attached units are for-sale product, and in Colorado, it's only two percent. That shows me that the balance is off. And so we needed to do something. I hope that this ordinance will entice for-sale attached in Westminster. But I want to make a plea to our state legislators who might be listening that I would much rather see a broad statewide approach that's consistent. And, and I would ask them to look at Westminster for a model, because, yes, we did start with Denver's approach, but I would say we made sure to insert the homeowner in it as well. Personal story, the only reason I am able to live in Westminster is because my husband and I, when we first started out, bought a condo. We lived in Capitol Hill in a condo. After that, we sold it and bought a small, single-family home in northwest Denver. And then we were able to sell that and buy our home here in Westminster, and now we have three children. And that evolution where you can build wealth and equity is missing for so many people. And I wanna make sure that we bring back, it's not just affordable housing, it's attainable housing. We need to have a pathway for people, and, and that's sorely missing. So, thank you.
Closing, let me, let me go back to one of the points made by one of the people who testified earlier, Mr. Clark. Myself, Mr. Clark, Ms. Talbert, a number of others, for almost three years now, have been working down at the state legislature with various organizations, various groups, individuals, to try to get the state to deal with this. And for three years, they have failed to do that. But therefore, we've had no other choice but to go to the municipal level and take it on at that level. And unfortunately, nineteen different versions of this are out there today. Each one's got a little bit of a tweak to that municipality instead of having a common sense, common approach to this at the state level. We don't hold a lot of hope that we'll get one through this year. But should we prevail and get one through, then we will anticipate that every municipality that has adopted their own will then conform to the state requirements. Westminster will not be left out. We are trying to bring... We are trying to bring affordable market rate and other housing to all of our communities, and without this product offering, we will never get people that can live in affordable units that are doing blue-collar jobs every day to be able to get that first home. As Counselor Sykes talked about, she started at the same level, and you progress up, but if you don't have that starting base, you're forced into the rental units, and you have nothing to show for at the end of a month except a rental receipt. You don't own anything. But I believe this is the correct step for us. It's been a long time coming. We've been cautious about it. Our stakeholders have been very patient with us, but we wanted to make sure that what we did, we did right the first time. No other comments? Try to get us through the voting on this one. And this is a roll call vote, so if you would, please, Ms. Parker.
Atchison?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
We only have one more. Somewhere I got a vote that's not counted.
Got it.
Got it now? The council's bill passes on a six to one vote. We will move for a second reading at a later time. Ms. Parker, I think you're done. Next item on the agenda is the... I got everybody. Mr. Garcia, I have you up first on this one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution number 47, adopting the revised 2017, 2018 hourly and seasonal pay plans.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion by council?
I just, I'm thrilled that we have the opportunity to vote on this. We are all just hearing tonight a great deal about cost of living in the state of Colorado, and I feel that this is a nice opportunity to try to do a little bit to help out those who do so much to help our city.
Any other comments? Again, a roll call vote, Ms. Parker. Let me get us there.
Baker?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes. And a motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Next item, Ms. Byrd?
I move to adopt Resolution number 48, authorizing the city manager to sign the intergovernmental agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District for the Big Dry Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project Improvements.
Ms. DeCambre?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? And this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Byrd?
Yes.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And the motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Ladies and gentlemen, we have made it through another city council meeting, and actually we have made it through the last city council meeting for 2016, but you're not done. You get to stay for one more. We will now adjourn as the Westminster City Council, and we will reconvene as the Westminster Housing Authority Board of Directors. So, at this point, I will take a motion for the board to approve the minutes of the April 11th. Ms. Byrd?
I move that the board approve the minutes of the April 11th, 2016 meeting as presented.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here, none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is move to adopt Resolution number 64. Council? Ms. Byrd?
I move to adopt Resolution number 64, approving the 2017 Westminster Housing Authority budget.
Mr. Garcia?
A second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Are there any questions from the Board of Directors? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, you're almost there. Go.
DeCambre?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Motion passes on a 7-0 vote. There being no other business before the Westminster Housing Authority, we will adjourn the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll take about a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene in the new anteroom for our presentations and follow-up. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. For those of you who are leaving us now, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.